Call the board.
Basine.
Here.
Buffalo.
Here.
Gabriel.
Present.
Jordan.
Here.
And Martin.
Present. Okay. I call this business meeting of October 18th, 2023 to order. Up next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance by our student representative, Cameron Satter.
Good evening. We request that all cell phones and pagers to be turned off or to vibrate during the course of this meeting. Thank you. Please rise and remain standing for the reciting of the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cameron. Okay. Can I get a motion to please adopt the business agenda?
I move that we adopt the business agenda.
Second.
And Mr. Jordan, seconded.
Basine.
Aye.
Buffalo.
Aye.
Gabriel.
Aye.
Jordan.
Aye.
And Martin.
Aye. Okay. Up next, we have the Clerk's report. Ms. Tanner, go ahead.
Yes. Give my information together. We have a special proclamation to be presented to the family of one of our beloved Norfolk Seventeen pioneers who integrated Norfolk schools. I would like to ask our school board members to make your way to the NPS backdrop and Dr. Birdsong as well, and student reps as well. And once you get there, I'd like the representatives, the two sons of Ms. Laverne Forbes Brown, to come to the podium. Yeah, I want them at the podium. You can go with them to the podium. Whereas the City of Norfolk School Board and the broader Norfolk community lost a valued community member and trailblazing student on Thursday, February 9th, 2023 with the passing of Laverne Forbes Brown. And whereas Laverne Forbes Brown was one of seventeen students to integrate Norfolk Public Schools in 1959 as part of the Norfolk Seventeen. And whereas during the school lockout in the winter of 1958, she and other Norfolk Seventeen students attended First Baptist Church Butte Street. And whereas on January 19th, 1959, the Virginia State Supreme Court and Federal District Court ruled the school closings unconstitutional, in February 2nd, 1959, they became the first African-American students to attend segregated schools in Virginia. And whereas Laverne Forbes Brown was in the seventh grade at Norview Junior High School, now Norview Middle, along with James Turner and Claudia Wellington, chosen to be a part of the first group of African-American students to desegregate six previously all-white schools in Norfolk Public Schools. And whereas Laverne Forbes Brown and her two classmates were not provided transportation or adult escorts to school like the Norfolk Seventeen students who desegregated the high schools and appreciated the support of fellow Norfolk Seventeen member Patricia Turner, who met them in front of the school every day to ensure their safety going home. And whereas Laverne Forbes Brown graduated from Norview High School in 1968, studied business administration management and computer programming at Norfolk State University, and was a fleet accounting technician for the United States Navy Industrial Supply Centers and Fleet Logistics Center, and retired after 20 years. After retirement, she worked for Bank of America. Whereas Ms. Forbes Brown leaves behind two sons, Wade W. White and Albert L. White Jr., and loving family members and friends to cherish her beloved memory. And now therefore be resolved on Wednesday, October 18th, 2023, that the school board of the City of Norfolk hereby honors the life of an icon and Norfolk Seventeen member Laverne Forbes Brown and her legacy to the City of Norfolk, Norfolk Public Schools, and the society as a whole. Congratulations. And now we'd like to get a picture of them with the board members. Did you want to say something?
I just want to say thank you. It's been a long time coming. Our mother was a very true inspiration to us and raised us very well. And we always wanted to get back to, you know, to the City of Norfolk. And I am a product of Norfolk Public Schools. And I joined the police department as well and retired from there as well. So I really do appreciate this recognition. Thank you so much.
And they have with us tonight, too, other representatives from the Forbes Brown family. If you would stand and jump in the picture if you like to, too, because I know this is important for you all as well. And Dr. Martin is giving directions on how to stand. There we go. Yes. Yes, Dr. Gabriel, that would be nice. This is Washington. And as they make their way back to their seats, I'd like everybody to please stand. And let's give Ms. Brown a welcome for her service. And board members, just stay there just real quick. It's the V S B A Awards. And just real quick, we have the V S B A sent certificates for board members to be honored for their credits with trainings and conferences. And starting with Rodney Jordan and Tanya Basine received the Award of Distinction. Congratulations. Congratulations. Mr. Clanton is not here. But Dr. Martin, you received Award of Excellence. Dr. Birdsong, you received Award of Achievement. And Ms. Buffalo, you received an Award of Recognition. And just get a picture of the board. That concludes our awards.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have our superintendent's report. Sorry about that. Go ahead, Dr. Birdsong, when you're ready.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here this evening. As you know, every month, we like to present to you the wonderful things that our children are accomplishing within our schools. So we have an exciting video for you today. Also featured in the video is Mr. Sadir. So you'll get an opportunity to see him with his other hat on. So without further ado, please roll the video.
Congratulations to Granby High Senior Cheerleader Sierra Weaver. The honor roll student in the school's International Baccalaureate Program was named September's Student Athlete of the Month by Atlantic Orthopedic Specialists. She received the award during the Granby Lake Taylor High Football Game.
Well, I was surprised that it was out of all of Norfolk, but it didn't really shock me until you guys saw the poster. Cheering has been a real, it has been a part of my life since I was four. So there has been so many times where I wanted to quit and give up. I didn't even want to cheer in college, but my coaches, they always encouraged me. My teammates, they always encouraged me. And I'm just happy that my hard work paid off. And, you know, everybody gets to see what I do and why I'm always never available. I'm always doing something because I'm doing cheer, and it's something that I love and I put my hard work into.
Hey, I'm Cameron Satter.
What's up, y'all? I'm AJ Saff.
And I'm InTheZone.
And I'm InTheZone.
We watched them on the field, now get to know them off it. InTheZone is a new segment that gives us a peek into the lives of our student athletes. Learn who they are and some of what they are about. Watch InTheZone on our social media platforms and our athletics page.
Every student at Jaycocks Elementary received a brand-new pair of shoes thanks to partners from the United Way, Truist, and Samaritan's Feet. Over 500 pairs of shoes were distributed by outstanding volunteers who were on hand to make sure each student had the right size and fit.
I am excited, you know, because I know that we have some students that are in need of shoes, you know? So it really lightens my heart to see them receive these shoes today. So I am very, very happy to see our kids be blessed with a pair of shoes.
Oh, this is wonderful. It always brings joy to my heart to see children receive something that they could actually use. So we want to right now give them a good start and let them know that someone else cares about them.
We're going to hand them these shoes, but I tell our volunteers it's so important that they get the Samaritan's Feet experience, which is more than just a pair of shoes, but a message of hope. So I want them to sit across and I say, you know, make sure these children feel like the most important thing in your life right in this moment. I want these kids to walk away feeling, oh, you know, I was super special. I got a new pair of shoes. This is the best day ever.
As part of their Monarchs Give Back program, Old Dominion University hosted their second annual event to combat food insecurity. After a brief ceremony celebrating the partnership between O D U and Norfolk Public Schools, guests and volunteers visited each food table to gather items that were carefully bagged for later distribution. In all, O D U donated more than 32,000 non-perishable items, which will be dispersed to 27 schools in our division and the O D U food pantry.
I didn't think it was going to be close to that. I mean, I know we had close to over 150 bags of food that was donated. And it's great to see the process today at Houghs. You know, we get these bags hand-tied and so neatly packaged. It's surreal to be part of such a great community service project that immediately gives back to our students that I'm with every single day. And I'm able to see that excitement, the joy, and I'm able to see the direct impact that this project provides to our community.
One of the things that makes me really happy about this is that this truly came from all volunteer support. We didn't work with a middle agent at all. These are all cans that came from people's homes, straight to the kitchens of young Norfolk youth and students and scholars, as well as our own students that may be struggling on campus. If there's a challenge, if there's a problem that we need to solve, folks will come together, and that's really what you saw today.
Norfolk Public Schools staff members were on hand for Shiloh Baptist Church's Annual Community Service Day. The event, which is designed to connect important partners directly with the community, was an outstanding opportunity for NPS employees to provide individuals with valuable information about how the division can help them.
Well, I am grateful for Norfolk Public Schools and for those who are here from Norfolk Public Schools. There are members of the Norfolk Public Schools that sit with us as trusted partners as we talk about some of the issues that plague our communities. And so I'm grateful that they come, again, to bring information to people who can take advantages of the services that Norfolk Public Schools offers.
So so far, I've been talking with some people here at the venue today about their needs, what they're looking for, part-time and full-time positions. So it's extremely important for me to be here today, along with everyone else here from Norfolk Public Schools, to show that we are out here in the community, looking to connect with individuals, bring them in, and find out what their needs are.
For more stories and information about what's happening in Norfolk Public Schools, visit the NPS homepage and click on the YouTube link.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, up next, we have public comment. Ms. Tanner, how many people have signed up for public comment?
Madam Chair, we have four individuals signed up for citizens' comments for tonight.
Okay, great.
Today's speakers have signed up for public comments before the start of today's business meeting. If you would like to provide public comments, you're required to state the agenda item or items or topic you are addressing prior to providing your public comments at this meeting. When your name is called, please come forward to the speaker's podium, state your name and whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools, or if you are employed by the district, and state your agenda item or items. One person is to speak at a time. If you are representing a group, state the group's name. You may ask your group members to stand in place to be recognized. Speaking time is limited to three minutes. A timer is set with an alarm that will signify the end of your speaking time. State your position and give facts and relevant data. Avoid saying anything that identifies students or personnel information about individual employees. Personnel, disciplinary, and confidential matters may be addressed to the school board directly via email at schoolboard@npsk12.com. Comments should be addressed to the board and not addressed to an individual member. School board members do not respond to public comments at the time they are given. Any written statements or supporting materials should be given to the clerk. And Dr. Martin, our first speaker for today is Hunter Knopf Singer, followed by Carl Poole.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Hunter Knopf Singer, and I'm a community organizer with the Sierra Club Virginia Chapter. I live and work in Norfolk, and I'm here tonight to talk about the future of the Maury High School building. Last month, I summarized the results of our community survey on the future of Maury High School, and today I'd like to talk about the benefits of the building being net zero. A net zero school is one that produces enough renewable energy to meet its own energy needs. Schools represent the third-largest sector of commercial building energy usage in the United States, with school building energy consumption costing U.S. school districts more than $8 billion per year and producing emissions equivalent to 18 coal-fired power plants. Research shows that air pollution from burning gas in buildings has negative health impacts, including exacerbating existing respiratory issues and increasing the risk of childhood asthma by up to 42%. These dangers are capstone by the ever-present threat of gas explosions, which we have seen happen in Virginia cities such as Harrisonburg and Springfield and all across the country. Students and staff will spend 1,000 hours per year in their school, making a healthy indoor environment of utmost importance and benefit to student performance, health, and wellness. Net zero schools cost less to operate, provide opportunities for hands-on learning for students, reduce costs related to extreme weather events, and create healthy indoor environments in schools. Better education and long-term savings are possible through net zero school building design. With the redevelopment of the Maury High School building, you have an opportunity to have the first net zero public school in the city and set an example for other districts in Hampton Roads. I hope that whichever plan you decide to move forward with is one that prioritizes the health and learning outcomes of the students and teachers that are in the building every day, and that you consider the input of these directly impacted community members when making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Carl Poole, followed by Vicki Greco.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dr. Martin. Members of the school board, Dr. Birdsong, good evening. My name is Carl Poole, and I'm an organizer with New Virginia Majority. I live and work in Norfolk. I don't have kids that go to Norfolk Public Schools, but I started my educational journey here, and that's important to me. I wanted to tell you a story tonight, a story about Bowlin Park Elementary School in the 90s. It's a story that many of you probably already know and probably know it better than I do. Imagine yourself, it's a Tuesday morning, and you're walking through those doors in the old school. You hear singing and clapping coming from one of the classrooms. That will be from the parent, teacher, staff, Glee Club that they created. It's a common sight to see parents and grandparents and community members in those halls for students. That's because of a strategy that was employed by the principal at the time, Dr. Herman Martin. He, for years, at the beginning of school years, even throughout the year, would go knocking on doors of community members that are around the school. He'd encourage his staff to do the same. He wanted to get to know the community. He wanted to get to know parents and bring those families into the school with supportive services that they can utilize. Now, this wasn't just simple engagement, get a survey, get some services, find out what you need. He wanted them to be decision-makers in the school, and they, through that, created a network of parents to do just that. They organized before and after-school programs. They had an advisory committee specific for the school. They would sit with administrators to interview new hires for teachers, for staff for the school. They were a part of what made that school work. And all of this was to make the job of teachers simpler and easier so they can teach and so students could learn. This was a strategy that worked. It's a strategy that is nothing new for Norfolk Public Schools, and that strategy's evolved and been used all across the country and is still currently used throughout the state of Virginia. It's in a form now that taking a good, close look at what's called the Sustainable Community School Model. And it's something I want Norfolk Public Schools to take a close look at now, because I believe it can work again, not just for one school, not just for a few years, but for every school in the city of Norfolk. So I'm going to extend an invitation to all of you members of the school board, to vice chair, to chair, and to you, Dr. Birdsong. Please, I want to sit down with each and every one of you to hear your thoughts on what this model could do for Norfolk now, because it's about the future of our children here. You cannot have a healthy school without having a healthy community. These things are linked, they're reciprocal. A healthy community of what state your community is in is one of the greatest indicators of how well kids will do in a public school. And public schools are what build communities. You have to build up both of them together. I want to have this discussion talking about the Sustainable Community School Model with each and every one of you, and I welcome the opportunity. Thank you for your time and hearing me out.
Thank you.
Next, we have Vicki Greco, followed by Elise Petersen-McMath.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dr. Martin, Ms. Buffalo, school board members, Dr. Birdsong, Mr. Satter, Ms. Jackson, and internal and external stakeholders in NPS. My name is Vicki Manuga-Greco. I'm an NPS parent and graduate, former special educator, and school board advisory committee volunteer. It's always heartening to witness again and again other community members who take the time to attend school board meetings in person, whether to observe and listen in real time or to also provide feedback in the form of public comments to the board. So I thank other shareholders in our schools who are here tonight and the board and administrators for hearing us out. I call us shareholders because we, the Norfolk community, are all in the business of ensuring our pre-K through 12 students are educated, supported, and guided to become successful graduates of our school division. Our school board is the boss, calling the shots and being accountable to constituents, essentially governing and leading as the board of directors for this important educational and life-shaping enterprise. And we rely on our superintendent to be the accountable CEO who oversees the day-to-day operations of our schools. That said, the governance business of filling the currently vacant Ward Five seat on our school board comes at a crucial time of our district's, for our district's opportunities and challenges. We wish our board the best as it undertakes this responsibility to find the best appointee in the next few weeks. Over 10 years ago, I was one of the founding members of Norfolk Gains, growing and investing in Norfolk Schools, a local grassroots advocacy group of teachers, parents, community members, and business owners that brings awareness about school funding and staffing and other legislative policy needs, including the establishment of elected school boards in Norfolk. We bring these needs to the forefront at the local and state levels to promote fully-funded and equitably-resourced schools that impact our shared future in the city and region. This past Monday, I attended a House District Candidate Forum at one of our nearby churches. One Virginia delegate candidate spoke about throwing money at our public schools, while another candidate addressed needed investment in people, in our students, staff, and our city schools. Norfolk Gains believes in investing and implementing with fidelity effective data-driven educational programs that meet our children's educational needs and provide support to our children so they're ready to learn, and staff are fully supported to meet students' needs. Norfolk Gains stands with New Virginia Majority and its recent program campaign work to give this important message that, one, we know the conditions in the community affect the conditions in the school; two, we know that the conditions in the community are caused by a lack of resources; three, we want our schools to be community resource centers to improve both the conditions in communities and conditions in our schools; four, the school board already received recommendations from an education consulting firm in July that the community school model is a solution to address inequities and a lack of community engagement in NPS.
Thank you.
Already implemented by Dr. Clark's, Herman Clark's work, I just want to finish. Five, our ask, we want the school board to fund three community school coordinator positions in the upcoming budget to pilot community learning centers in NPS. We believe the significant and needed investment is sound and it's in alignment with our strategic efforts for educational excellence and equity. And I apologize, I went high-tech. I usually bring a tablet, and it was very hard for me to figure out how to scroll. I am not a digital native. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elise Petersen-McMath.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the school board and Dr. Birdsong. My name is Elise McMath. I'm here tonight representing the Norfolk Chapter of New Virginia Majority. I am a public education community organizer here, and I have the pleasure of working with and listening to parents across the city. And I'm here tonight to echo Vicki and Carl in saying that parents know that the conditions in the community are a reflection of the conditions in our schools and vice versa. They're inextricably linked and connected. Two, we know that oftentimes the parts of the community that need the most resources are the schools that need the most resources as well. Three, as a result, we would like our schools to be the places that house those resources that the community needs to improve both the conditions in the community and also the conditions in our schools. Four, we know that the school board received a recommendation from an education consulting firm back in July that recommended the community school model as a solution to address the inequities and lack of community engagement in schools across Norfolk. And five, we're here to ask that the school board fund three community school coordinator positions in the upcoming budget to pilot community learning centers in Norfolk Public Schools. I'm here tonight representing the concerns of parents who unfortunately childcare continues to be a large barrier for meaningful participation in civic events like this. But yeah, we're going to continue asking for this leading up to February, and we welcome conversation from any of the board members. They would like to hear from any of the parents about why we think this model would work. There's research that supports this model in districts across the country that have seen a decrease in chronic absenteeism, an increase
our art gallery display for this school year. So she just had something she wanted to share, she was supposed to share, so you can come forward, Georgiana.
Okay. Now, so did you want to tell everyone why we're wearing orange?
You can tell them why. I can't.
We're celebrating Unity Day.
Yes.
So we coordinated.
That's it?
Well, I thought she had something prepared. Hi, go ahead, whenever you're ready.
There we go.
Great. So, good evening, Chair Dr. Martin, Vice Chair Moore Buffalo, School Board members, Dr. Birdsong, administrators, and guests. Tonight, we are celebrating art education in our schools. I am Dr. Georgiana Filio, Senior Coordinator of Art and Dance Education. It is my pleasure to showcase the amazing talents of our NPS students and teachers during this presentation and tonight's gallery walk. Please enjoy works produced by Cave 12 students district-wide. I would like to begin by celebrating a few recent and upcoming opportunities offered through the Art Education Department. We kicked off the school year with our annual third-grade Chrysler Museum tour. The Department of Art Education continues to partner with the Chrysler Museum of Art to lead third-grade students on a narrative tour of pre-selected works connecting storytelling and literacy as students analyze various forms of art, honing their observation skills to make inferences about hidden narratives. National Portfolio Day was held on Saturday, October 14th, at the Virginia Commonwealth University in Richmond, Virginia. Forty-five aspiring artists ventured to VCU to have their portfolios reviewed by colleges and universities from across the nation. Students also took advantage of the proximity to the Museum of Fine Arts to experience artworks by artists such as Kohendi Wiley. Norfolk Public Schools art educators were welcomed back to the Chrysler Museum of Art as the featured artists for the Neon Festival opening. Please join us in celebrating our talented educators at the reception for the Artist/Educators Exhibition at the Chrysler Museum of Art on October 19th at 6:00 PM. The featured work is by Sharah Worts, an art educator at Norview High School. On this slide, you will find a list of upcoming art education events to anticipate this year, including the exciting return of the Fine Arts Festival to be held at the Chrysler Museum of Art in May. Students were asked to submit an artist statement to support their work exhibited in tonight's gallery walk. Five pieces were selected as featured works of art. I will be sharing those artist statements with you tonight. Charlie Tace is a first-grade student at Camp Allen Elementary School. The title of this work is Friends Portrait. I drew this picture of me and my friends, Tate and Courtney. We are playing tag and sometimes it gets hot when we are playing. Sarah Mitchell is an eighth-grade student at Northside Middle School. The title of this work is There Once Was A Place. I created this artwork because I wanted to make something in black and white focused on old-fashioned. Eugene Bobincheck is a fifth-grade student at Bayview Elementary. The title of this work is Leaf Identity. I was inspired to create this because I have a really big tree at home and I play near it. Trees are important to me and the earth because they provide oxygen. Bella Davis is an eighth-grade student at Lake Taylor School. The title of this work is As Pencils Take Flight. As Pencils Take Flight is a transformation drawing of a crane entirely made of pencils, ready to take flight into the great beyond. The crane represents our childlike wonder and our desire to explore nature. The pencils that make up the crane represent how we can use art to preserve memories and our connection to nature and all her beauty. Together, As Pencils Take Flight represents our connection to nature and to our inner child, preserving our curiosity and our wonder. Kalen Warren is an 11th-grade student at Lake Taylor High School. The title of this work is Kaleidoscope. Inspired by the artist Jimmy James Green, I created my drawing using colored pencils and graphite. I like hard implied lines contrasted by smooth blending and bold color. Learning the new techniques to make this work a success was difficult, but necessary to begin this project. I started thinking about the geometric design and the contrast of the organic shapes of the dragonfly, real and fake forms. This is how I came up with the title Kaleidoscope. Life is a combination of real and fake. We get to decide the type of kaleidoscope we use to view the world. I am still building my kaleidoscope, but I am enjoying the view. It's beautiful at times, even iridescent. What a wonderful artist statement to end our presentation with tonight. On this slide, you will find a list of our participating schools in our gallery walk So thank you for allowing me to present tonight so that together, we can celebrate art education in our schools. It is important that we acknowledge that the arts are vital to providing a well-rounded education to children. Arts education encourages and assists in improving a child's attitude towards school. The arts have the ability to increase academic achievement by supporting reading, writing, communication, critical thinking, and creative problem-solving. I feel very privileged to serve in a school division that supports art education in our schools. So, thank you all for your continued support of the arts.
Thank you. And please take a moment to look around the room and in the hallway and look at the beautiful art that Dr. Filio was just referring to. Thank you, Dr. Martin.
Okay, um, let's see. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. I second that motion. Thank you.
Maseen?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, up next, we have our monthly financial report.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you, Ms. Spivey?
Very good. Thank you. Good evening to you, Dr. Martin.
Would you like to move the microphone closer?
Yes, yes. Good evening, Dr. Martin, Dr. Birdsong, and our School Board. Tonight, I'll present the first quarter financial statements, so the first three months of the fiscal year. As in previous financial reports, this report reflects July through September 30th transactions that occurred and were recorded on or before October 11th. As shown on page two, we've received $83.1 million of our $399 million that we expect to receive in revenues this year. Collections for this, and that is 20.8% collections of the budget, and that compares pretty much the same with the previous two years, which were 20.7% and 21.4%. As with prior years, the collections are based on cash collections during the period. On page three, we'll look at the expenditure chart. It highlights both revenues and expenditures. By the end of September, we spent or encumbered $76 million, or 19.1% of the $399 million budget. During the previous two years, spending through September 30th had ranged between 15.1% and 16.9%. Thus, our spending this year, this far, is ahead of the previous two years. On page four, there are two charts. Once again, these charts, one of them is for revenue and the other is for spending, and they show the monthly trend for two full years and now, you know, we're beginning on the third year. And then, in the peach color, shows the trend for each month in both revenues and expenditures. On page five, shows the actual collections. May I have my page numbers wrong? On page five, the actual collections are 14.5 million? I'm sorry. Page five shows the revenues and expenditures. We, so we've received to date the 83.414, or 21% of our revenues and our expenditures. We've spent 19%, which is 76 million in this first quarter. Then, beginning on page six is where we have our detail schedules that go into the various types of expenditures and categories of our spending and our revenue. We had no transfers this month that exceeded $50,000. Then, beginning on page 17, we have our quarterly grants report. This report shows that our total grants are 261.4 million, of which 210 million have been spent or encumbered, which is about 80% of our current grants. I want to take a closer look at page one. The first two boxes there show our pandemic-related grants. The first one, the first box showing the CARES funds, as you can see, of the 51.46 million that we received, we just, we are 6,000 shy of spending the entire amount. Then, we move down to the American Rescue Plan grants. Most of these have a, the funding can be used up through September 30 of next year. You can see the actual dates on the chart. We have 120.3 million awarded in these grants, of which 76.7 million have already been spent or encumbered, and we have a remaining 43.5 million that we have the year to spend. And we do have these monies allocated to areas and have every expectation that we will have them spent by the deadline next year. I think that, well, no, actually, we have the gifts. The final thing in this report are the quarterly, is the quarterly gift report that has to be approved by the Board. As you can see, the schools reported 49,516 dollars of donations during this period. And I will take any questions anyone has.
Go ahead, Ms. Maseen.
Thank you, thank you so much for the update. So I have several questions. Let's see. So, I am going to start with some basic, let me see where to start. So, first, I'd like to start with, have we received an update? So I'm trying to, there's a couple of things. I'm trying to figure out, so we, you know, the state passed the budget late, obviously we know, but have we, have we fully rectified, you know, how that's impacting our budget? Impacting our budget? Because, you know, I've, for instance, I've received some questions about bonuses that have, I guess, are still supposed to go out.
We'll be looking at that, you know, this month is when we begin our new budget process as well as, you know, begin to focus on where we are. It's a very timely question. So, we will be going into that to make, to see where we are, to be able to, you know, propose what, how we're doing this year, as well as how we're going to do next year without these additional funds that we've received the last few years.
Okay, okay. And then, and I guess I was wondering, because it's gotten a little bit confusing and I might just need a refresher reminder of what we did last year, given that the state was so late in passing their budget as well. But in terms of the unexpended funds that we had from last year, typically, like in, you know, in several years past, we would typically be asking the city, you know, to reappropriate the funds back to us around this time, you know, September-ish, around this time. Are we, are we at that point?
We usually wait until the audit is complete so we know for sure.
Okay.
I anticipated the question, so.
Oh, okay, great.
So, I know, there could be audit adjustments that affect this number.
Okay.
But based on what we know today, the amount of general fund revenues over expenditures that could be part of reversion is 19.4 million.
19.4, okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Spivey. And have we received an update from the City Manager regarding, any updates regarding the, from the funding, regarding the funding formula?
We have not received anything from the City Manager yet. Again, I think we're in the cusp of that timeframe.
Okay, all right, great. And so now, I'm going to transition a little bit now, my, a couple of questions related to the federal funds, if I may. So, given that we are, you know, at the end of closing out some of the funding that we've received, I don't know, you know, some of this is for Dr. Birdsong and team. If we could get some sort of a report, and I know, I think, Dr. Poole, I think, over the summer, had, I think, intended, if I recall, you know, was going to show us, at least with the summer school, to kind of show us what the impact was of some of the, how some of the funding had impacted our summer school programming and how that impacted the academic progress of some of our students. And so that's just one example of how our funding was used to move our students, you know, in the right direction. So, in terms of funds that were used to improve student excellence, if we could get some sort of report at some, at some point in terms of how funds were used to impact positive student outcomes, I think that would be, that would be helpful for us and maybe integrated into the work that we do aligned with our Board goals. I think that would be really helpful. I think that would be really helpful. The other thing, and I know is top of mind for all of us, is to get a better understanding about what programs and resources that were used and funded using those federal funds that will now be retired, I don't know what the right wording is, but will not be, we may not have the funds to maintain, but that did produce positive outcomes, that we know had great benefit, that we might want to keep. And how do we, how do we sustain those resources in upcoming budgets? And I, I know that's probably going to be what everybody's thinking about and advocating for. So, you know, I'd really love to hear more about that in the future, but I just want to put a pin kind of in that at some point. So I just wanted to put that out there. But that's, that's all I have for now. But I really appreciate you anticipating our questions and being ready for it, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Yeah, I just have a couple. One, just a clarification on what Ms. Bassin asked. With the state budget and the bonus that's supposed to go to teachers and, if possible, beyond, I guess, I didn't quite understand, is that something that will happen in this calendar year, or is it something we still are trying to figure out when that, when that would occur?
We're, we're, yeah, we're, we're looking at the numbers now.
Okay.
To see what can occur.
Okay, thank you, okay. So I got that. And then, on the, I guess I have three questions. The grant funds, under the American Rescue Plan funds, there are two incentive grant categories, one for bus drivers and one for recruitment. And it looks like both of those had a, I guess about twenty percent that didn't get expended. Any thoughts on what it was that prevented those incentive grants from getting a hundred percent expended?
When, when I've inquired, there's certain rules that, yeah, that came along with those grants of what, you know, what could be funded with them, and, and how, so how those grants worked. And the amount that we spent was the amount that we were.
Could.
That we could, yes.
All right, thank you. And then, last question, with these CARES Act and Rescue Fund grants, can you remind me, isn't there's, is there a website that we can go to if we want to see, I guess, in broad categories, where the money was spent?
I'll have to get back with you on that, but I think, I know that we do, we have to do some reporting, so, but I'm not sure which.
Okay.
Exactly what the website is.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I was showing him where it was. I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to smack you.
I got smacked. What I missed.
I didn't mean to do that, but, I was just showing him where, on the NPS website, on the, under the spending plan.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Bassin. A non-bullying month took care of us.
I apologize.
Any other questions? I'm still looking down here, there's no other school board members down here tonight. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the financial audit subject.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel, can I get a second?
Annual report subject to audit.
Right, got it, second.
Mr. Jordan seconded. Ms. Tanner, please call the question.
Bassin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye.
Okay, up next we have item five point zero-two, proposed Goal Five modification. Mr. Jordan, I'm going to hand this over to you, since you made that modification.
Thank you, Dr. Martin, and school board members, and Dr. Birdsong. Where we, over the last couple of months, as you all know, we've been working on board goals, as well as the providing the administration, Dr. Birdsong, an opportunity to provide us with the progress measures on how we can meet those goals. We worked on a Board Goal Five, and that was around college and career civic readiness. We got to the point at the previous meeting where it looked like maybe CCRi, as it's called, was not getting us to where we thought we could get to, at least as a board goal. We know that within the strategic plan, that will be monitored. So as, I've shared with you all this proposed modification that would keep us with a goal around graduation, but be more focused on what students know and what students can do, versus with a CCRi goal, where we see it was more about presence and attendance. So the, the recommendation is that we adopt a Goal Five, which would be the percentage of MPS graduates receiving advanced diplomas will meet or exceed the state average by the end of twenty-six, twenty-seven, class of twenty, twenty-seven. And then I noted that for the class of twenty-twenty-three, our MPS measure or indicator or result was thirty-five point three percent. The state average was at fifty-one point five percent. And then I just included a chart from the school quality profile that also provides, provides that information. So the recommendation is, is that we adopt Board Goal Five around advanced diplomas. Any questions or thoughts or comments, concerns, objections? Dr. Birdsong, administration, anybody?
No, not at this time.
Thank you.
So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Board Goal Five, the percentage of MPS graduates receiving advanced diplomas will meet or exceed the state average by the end of twenty, school year twenty-six, twenty, twenty-seven.
I second that motion.
Okay. Ms. Tanner, please call the question.
Bassin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
I'm going to vote aye as well, but I do want to state that Mr. Clanton is not here, but did, did express that he also supports this modification, so I vote aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Okay, that passes, thank you. It's a lot of work that's gone into these goals, so I appreciate everyone's contribution to this. Up next, we have the superintendent and board non-negotiables. You do? Okay. Okay, thanks. Who would like to speak on this?
I will speak on this.
Go ahead. And then we'll take a vote.
Yes. Well, thank you, Dr. Martin, and I'm just pulling up my draft, it's being really slow. Well, like I said, I appreciated the discussion we had at the last meeting on, on this draft of non-negotiables. And the non-negotiables are really a set of parameters that go along with the goals, and they go hand in hand. It really sets the conditions for, whoops, I went this close, it sets the conditions for the goals in order to achieve the goals. And last time we talked about, I'm not going to read each one of them, but we have board non-negotiables, and we have superintendent non-negotiables. And last time we, I took your feedback, I spoke to each one of you during the last, you know, two weeks since we last met, and talked about some of the changes that were made, and some of the changes that were not made. And, you know, the, the non-negotiables are, you know, for the board to develop, just as the board goals are for the board to develop. And conceptually, I think we all agree on these five non-negotiables. And so with that, we, you know, I'm, I'm here to listen. I mean, I think, I don't know that anyone has any further questions about it, but, you know, this is an opportunity to hear any further comment, if anyone has any further comment or questions about it. This is the opportunity to, to hear them. But the non-negotiables, the one change that was not made, that we did discuss at the last meeting, was to, you know, frame them in, in the positive format, and the reason that it has not, it is still written as a negation, is that because in the negation format and the wording, is that because it really does allow the superintendent more freedom to do what she needs to do in order to achieve the goals, whereas putting it in the positive is more restrictive. And so that is why it is still kept that way. So, just, just so you all know, and we've already talked about, I've talked about that with each one of you, as we talked about it and discussed, and I've kind of gone back and forth about it, where, over the last two weeks. So, right now, it's just an opportunity for a brief comment, questions, any further discussion? And so.
I will just say that I know that a lot of work was, you know, put into this, in that you've spoken individually with each of the board members, so.
Correct.
I think we, we're really just ready for a vote at this time, so can I get a motion to adopt?
Right, well, I do, I do want to clarify one other point.
Okay.
So when we left at the last meeting, you know, I know there was, we had some spirited and passionate discussion, and we did talk about progress.
All in the name of children.
All in the name of children, yes, of course, all in the name of children, and we talked about progress measures. And we talked about, you know, the importance of having progress measures and why they're there. And like, like I, you know, just mentioned at that, at that meeting, you know, these non-negotiables were, you know, derived in large part from the strategic plan. And so the, the not, it's, it's really important to monitor the non-negotiables. And through discussion with each one of you, you know, we, we felt, it came out, you know, that yes, it's important to, to monitor the non-negotiables. However, we definitely hear what the administration is saying, and we felt like giving some more time to develop the progress measures was important, so that is one thing that we did come away with. So there is two requests that are being asked in this motion, just as we make the motion, is to, one, is to make a motion to approve the, the non-negotiables as they are, the five non-negotiables, but to also ask Dr. Birdsong and the administration to come back with progress measures, with a draft of the progress measures at the December work session, with the hope to vote and approve them at the December business meeting. So, right now, I'd like to open it for discussion, if there, well, I guess we can make a motion on it, and then, so I'll make a motion to approve the non-negotiables, and to direct the administration to bring a draft of the progress measures at the December work session back to the school board for review.
Can I get a second?
Second.
I, I would like to make a statement in the spirit of discussion.
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Gabriel.
I really do appreciate Ms. Bassin's work, and everyone's work, on really hearing each other out in a very collegial fashion, on pros, cons, how we can improve the language that is here. And I also appreciate the feedback that the superintendent provided, because the governance team is composed of the board and the superintendent. And when I see these, which were, you know, originally phrased as constraints, I appreciate that we frame them a little bit more as the non-negotiables. To me, it does not feel right, the negative wording with regards to the superintendent's non-negotiables. And while on principle, I can accept the parameters that are set forth here for the board, and on principle, I can accept that Dr. Birdsong already feels that, within the non-negotiables, that she will enact policies that are in alignment with curriculum, that she will not have staff members who are underperforming, at chronically underperforming schools or stu, schools that are in need, and that she wants to foster environments of safety, nurturing learning places. However, how they're worded, and without her buy-in, so to speak, on the parameters, I think is just too much at this time, and adding the additional layer onto the plate of the great goals that we have passed and worked very well together on. To me, it's just, I'm, I'm not in support of voting for this at this time, and I wanted to share that with everyone as we take this vote. I do respect how the vote will take place, if it is the majority, of course, the majority will, will rule, and I will respect that process, but I think it's important also that you all know why I'll be voting the way that I am.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity, and I do appreciate the collegial conversations.
Dr. Martin?
Yes.
Just, if I, if I can, so I appreciate all that Dr. Gabriel has stated, I just want to offer a couple of things on the, on the wording piece. One, let me say, these are not individual specific, so as we're in the process now of selecting a new board member, the, the school board non-negotiables won't just apply to the six that are here, they'll apply to the seven, so they're not in, meant to be individualized, likewise with the superintendent. So what these are representative of is what we hear from the community, what we've observed, and they're really meant to be empowering. So if you think about the, the Bill of Rights, you know, Congress shall make no law of that, and so the intent is to say that there's so much more that you can do, but these are just the boundaries or non-negotiables upon which you can do those things. The other thing why I think it's important to word it that way from the board with the superintendent, whoever, any superintendent, any school division is, to me, it puts the position, the superintendent in a position of power. So rather than the superintendent having come to the board and say, may I do this, or can I do that, or, you know, direct me to do so and so, this in essence says, you don't have to do that. We've, we've set forth the, the values that we have in terms of the, the non-negotiables. We know for a given, all of us are going to uphold the law, so we don't even deal with that that's embedded in here. But these are just some values that we are saying that we like to uphold, and have the superintendent uphold, as the superintendent brings forward recommendations and does his or her work. So, you know, it's, it's, I know it's written, and so it sounds like it's negative, but it's really not intended to be that way, it's really just supposed to be more empowering, mention the Bill of Rights, Ten Commandments, those are just, those, those guidelines for us to know where not to cross. But within those guidelines, feel free to be as innovative as, as one likes, and hopefully combined with the board non-negotiables, we will find our way to be more focused on governance and progress monitoring, and not be in the way, as one of the board non-negotiables mentioned, in terms of the day-to-day operations of the school division.
Okay, any other comments?
Oh, I can share as well that Mr. Clanton was also supportive.
Yeah, he was supportive, thank you. You're Mr. Clanton's spokesperson this evening. Okay, did we, I'm sorry, did we have a motion?
Yes.
Yes, discussion, okay, go ahead and call the question.
Okay. Bassin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Nay.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Okay, that passed, and that. Okay, that passed, and that takes us to the end of our meeting, so thank you all for being here this evening, and have a safe travel home. Meeting's adjourned.